Back hoping it would give us a little more air. If anybody gets cold, um...
Move to the front.
What you know, good choice of a lobby. No. Um, if you get cold, we can shut them a little bit, or if you're still hot, we can open them a little wider.
And there's more seats available?
Yes, and there are some seats available in front and on the second row, so maybe those of you who've been standing, if you'd like to sit, please do. We're now moving to the final session of this evening. The SWIM school district is governed by a five-member board of directors, and there are three positions open in this election. The school district's board of directors determines the vision of the educational program, designs a structure to achieve that vision, assures that the schools are accountable to the community, and advocates for continuous improvement in student learning. The board selects the superintendent and sets policy for the district. All voters in the school district vote on all of the directors who serve four-year terms. School board members do not earn a salary or a per diem. There are two candidates for each of three positions in the election contention this year. Robin Hendrickson and Heather Jeffers are running for District One. Jim Stoffer and Charlotte Wright are running for District Three. And two candidates are running for the at-large position, Five, Heather Short and Will Payne. We're grouping all six candidates into one panel, since all voters in the district will see all the names on the ballot, and the issues will be essentially the same for all board members. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement, and we will follow with about 25 minutes for audience questions and then closing remarks. We're going to begin with the opening remarks. We asked all six candidates to cover questions in their one-minute opening statement. We were really debating about one minute, or two minutes, or whatever. So if you have any input on this, if you see a lead member, if you think, you know, that they didn't have enough time to cover it, we'd appreciate knowing them. They would cover these questions. Their qualifications for serving on the SWIM school board, what are their primary goals for their first year in office, and how do they intend to address the key issues confronting the school district. So first, we'll start with the opening remarks from the candidates for District Number One in the order in which they were filed. So Robin Hendrickson has an undergraduate degree from Western Washington University and a master's and PhD degrees in education from Seattle Pacific University. She is currently a professor at Seattle Pacific University and chair of the Master's in Teacher Leadership Program. She was a math professional development specialist, and she also taught math and middle school special education. She's a classroom volunteer at Gray Wolf Elementary School. She has lived in SWIM for 13 years.
When I think about the most important qualifications a school board member should have to meet the demands of the position, my first inclination would be to provide you with my resume that is filled with education degrees and lots of experience. However, the research is clear. What really matters is the ability to welcome diverse viewpoints, have confidence and competence to have tough conversations, yet at the same time work collaboratively amongst all stakeholders to promote the number-one priority we have, which is to serve our students. My primary goal includes rebuilding a student-focused board of directors that instills confidence from those who matter, our educators, families, and students. I have a great deal of experience in collaborative group practices that goes beyond simply trying to be amicable to welcoming diversity and promoting a vision of improvement. There will always be issues confronting our schools. Emerging issues won't go away. It is how the board deals with them that is important. This is my promise to you. I will approach all decisions with an ethical, professional, and well-informed perspective.
Heather Jeffers has a bachelor's degree in social welfare and a master's in social work, both from the University of Washington. She worked as a medical social worker at the UW Medical Center and Swedish Medical Center. She became director of social services at a nursing home in SWIM when she moved to SWIM in 2003, and is currently the executive director at a nursing home in Port Townsend. She is a member of the Sunrise Rotary Club and is currently vice chair of the SWIM school board. Ms. Jeffers.
Well, in addition to being a mom and a social worker, I believe that being a licensed nursing home administrator provides me with a unique skill set that qualifies me to continue serving on the board. For those of you who don't know, the nursing home industry is more highly... the nursing home industry is more highly regulated than any other industry in the United States, and it is funded solely by state and federal reimbursements that are continuously being cut. Within this environment, I'm responsible to ensure that we deliver five-star quality service that is not only in compliance with certain regulations, but also achieves outcomes that are above state and national benchmarks. I have a proven track record of success in these areas, which is what makes me qualified to serve on the board, because I not only understand the challenges that come with running a school district, but I can provide a unique skill set to contribute to the process. I believe that with a solid strategic plan, accountability, and monitoring evaluation process, the rest of the district's goals will naturally follow. I plan to continue to use my administrative and operational skills along with my professional and personal connections I have developed to develop a strategic plan with clear and measurable goals to increase community awareness that will foster community support and leadership in our schools.
Now we're going to move to the candidates for District Number Three in the order they filed for office. Jim Stoffer and Charlotte Wright. Jim Stoffer has lived in SWIM for 13 years. He has a BA in political science from Columbia College. He is a retired Coast Guard officer. He has been active in local PTAs, the high school choir boosters, and operatic club production team. He is a past president of Citizens for SWIM Schools, and he serves on the SWIM Irrigation Festival Board. Mr. Stoffer.
Good evening, and thank you for attending. My family came to SWIM on a Coast Guard assignment back in 2002, and we've made SWIM our home. I have served as an advocate and tireless volunteer for our school district and community since. I bring to the school board a broad perspective that includes detailed knowledge of the district and understanding of the budgeting process and Washington State requirements, and ability to be objective and fair, and appreciation of the diverse needs of our schools and the community. Primary goals: continue with the plans to improve our facilities, update the district's strategic plan, to develop and foster a better working relationship with our city and county officials amongst our community. Areas to focus on: improve our academic achievement for all students, hold our state representatives responsible to financially support our schools, improve our facilities to support educational needs. And then, board members need to find ways to work together and be a positive advocate for our schools to work together as a body for our children. Board member visibility in the community is critical. Positive change begins with taking action. I will do that.
Charlotte Wright has lived in SWIM since 2011. She has a master's degree in education, a multicultural credential, and a gifted and talented teaching certificate. She has been a classroom teacher, including teaching English language learners and students with special needs. Ms. Wright.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm the most qualified person for the job, because since the day my oldest daughter was born 25 years ago, I have been educating and a working parent who understands what working parent challenges are. I have been supportive behind the scenes, but now I'm ready to take a stand. I am a role model to my children, my fellow employees, and peers. I am focused and goal-oriented and can keep a team on task. As a credential teacher, my firsthand experience with teaching demands the use of best practices, analyzing curriculum and designing instruction, make me the right choice. During my first year, I will work diligently, changing the climate and perception of the board by working together and making decisions based on the district's strategic plan and for safety of students and teachers. I will achieve these goals by holding my fellow board members responsible to their input and by working with the superintendent to project our district into a position where we, as a community, can continue to be proud to raise our families.
And now the two candidates for our at-large director position in private board, Heather Short and William Payne. Heather Short has undergraduate and graduate degrees from Michigan State University and Murray State University in Kentucky. She graduated from Auburn University's Veterinary Medicine Program. She moved to SWIM and became a veterinarian at the SWIM Animal Clinic, Animal Hospital in 2006. She bought the practice in 2009 and continues to own and operate it today. She has two children that attend Gray Wolf Elementary and is active in the PTA. She also volunteers with the Humane Society, WAG, and Peninsula Friends of Animals. Ms. Short.
Thank you. I am running for SWIM School District Board of Directors because I believe that a quality education is one of the most important tools we can provide for our children. What I have learned through 10 years of college, six years of running my own small business, 13 years of marriage, and seven years of being a mom is that organization and communication are two areas in which I excel and two of the most important in any relationship. I feel that I can bring these skills, as well as my connections, both within our school community and in the community as a whole, to the table as a board director. The connections I have in this community also serve to address both my primary goal and what I feel to be one of the key issues confronting the board, a serious disconnect between the board, the district's parents, and the community at large. I intend to work to rebuild trust and keep our district informed. Thank you.
William Payne has an undergraduate degree from Wayland Baptist University and an MBA and law degree from the University of Wyoming. He is retired from the U.S. Marine Corps. He served as Plow County prosecuting attorney in 2014. He's currently president of Probono Lawyers and is also active with Habitat for Humanity and the Sheriff's Citizens Advisory Board. He is currently in private practice in SWIM. Mr. Payne.
Thank you. I want to thank the lead for inviting us and holding this great forum. It's always fun, but we don't have much time, so I would say my vote is for two minutes. First, I'd ask for your vote. I know many of you from my campaign last year, and I appreciate your support. The qualifications I have, as indicated by the moderator, is I have a law degree, and I have a business degree, and I run a small business. But more importantly, I'm a parent. And last night, I was up until 1:00 a.m. with my daughter, who's in the ninth grade, helping her with her math. So I believe that as a school board person, school board director should have an active role in the school with their children. I have that role. I also have a great connection in the community with many of the leaders in the community, with many other business owners and such, and parents and students. So my primary goal this next year when I'm elected is to address the curriculum and the facilities and build a better relationship between the community and the board. Thank you.
Thank you all. Now it's time for your questions. All candidates will have an opportunity to respond to all the questions. You will have up to 30 seconds to ask your questions. The candidates will be given up to one minute to answer each question. Because we have more than two candidates for this part of our forum, we're not going to include rebuttals in this session. It would be too time-consuming to give everybody the opportunity to rebut, and it would reduce the number of audience questions. So we're going to ask you, again, thank you for lining up at the microphone. And again, if you don't want to come to the microphone and you wanted someone else to read your question, just put your name on the card, and Barbara said she would read them. We've asked everyone to remain after this forum so that you can talk to them directly. I'd like to start with one question.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. It is, what would be your job as a school board member? And I'm going to start with Ms. Hendrickson, and we're going to go across like this, and then the next time I'll start with each one. We'll go consecutively. So if you'll start, Robin. Thank you. What would be your job as a school board member?
So if you think of it as a T-chart, the school board members and school board directors are on one side, and the superintendent is on the other. The school board members are in charge of approving policies, approving budgets, those types of things, whereas the superintendent is in charge of then implementing those budgetary items, teachers, personnel issues, and such. So the primary job of a school board personnel, school board director, first of all, is to, you know, approve budgets and such. But it's also to be a really important conduit to the community when parents have questions. That is, your job is to engage the community and really work with the community, families, parents, students, in building their understanding of the current issues that are going on in the district, as well as listening to what they have in terms of questions or other concerns. So I like to think of it as really an engagement of the community in a collaborative process.
Ms. Jeffers.
Having been on the board for one year, I can tell you that I'm still learning quite a bit, but have learned, there's a lot to learn. But as far as my job as a board member, as Robin said, you know, we are, the board's responsibility is to ensure that policies and procedures are carried out and that they hold the superintendent accountable. But I believe as a board member, you know, we are the link to the community and a voice for our constituents. So it is important to be very engaged and speak to all community members, parents, be a voice for everybody, and help them, educate them on what the process is and where to voice their grievances to, or help them navigate the system and ensure that their concerns are addressed and followed up on. And to use my skill sets at the same time to be that diverse opinion or diverse, you know, part of the collaboration process to come up with solutions and to think of things that maybe other people hadn't. So it's a collaborative process.
Mr. Stoffer.
Thank you. Well, there's four basic job requirements. One is set the vision and goals for the district, adopt those policies, hire and evaluate the superintendent, and then adopt and oversee the annual budget. But in that, again, is getting out in the community. And I would say that my last three years, where I've been on the facilities committee for the district and then president of Citizens for SWIM Schools and then some other committees in there, the board and the community haven't communicated as well. And that means board members need to get out into the public visible and talking in coffee chats, one-on-one, attending other meetings. And we have to be active in the community. And I haven't seen that, which is one of the main reasons I'm running, because I know that I am active in the community. Thank you.
Ms. Wright.
Thank you. My job as a school board member will be to listen and to hear the words of our parents and our teachers that are out there struggling in the classroom for either lack of resources, time to be, have professional development, or, you know, struggles with a building condition. We need, as Jim said, to be available to the community, bring the community into the classroom. As a teacher, when I was teaching, I often had the community speakers come in. It works. Children enjoy it. They are engaged. It makes for a wonderful learning environment and working respectfully between the other four members of the board.
Ms. Short.
As a business owner, one of the things that I always ask for my employees is to give me input all the time. I want them to be involved, because if they're involved, they are more invested in our business and in the work that we do. And so I would ask that of our community. Invest your time, your interest, your feelings of what you want done in this board. Invest in us. I want to be able to work with all the board members in a respectful, ethical way, but I want the community's input on how that needs to be done. Thank you very much.
Mr. Payne.
Thank you. So my simple answer, just to...
No.
No, it's not.
Should be right length.
How we doing? Got it? Does that take my time or you start over? So my first answer is to take all the good responses you heard and then give them to me, and I'll tell you that that's my answer. But I'll tell you what I'm going to do. So as a former attorney general, I worked with families and I worked with children, primarily children of abuse and neglect. And my primary practice now is a family law attorney. I'm the only family law attorney in SWIM, and I'm the only candidate that has the experience with working with families and children that can give me the input I need and to take back to the school board and the administrators and work with the superintendent and such. So that's what I will do. My primary goal, these other things we've talked about are ancillary goals, are job duty. My goal is to be the conduit or interface with the citizens to get their voices heard with the school board for what they want. And you've heard a lot of discontent and hate and things flying around the room today. So that's my role as a school board member, to do that, and that's what I'll do when I'm elected.
All right. Questions from the audience.
My name is Pam Dennis. I want to have each of you speak to the Common Core State Standards. I want to know if you favor them or not. If so, why? If not, why?
We're going to start with Ms. Jeffers.
I think the discussion about Common Core, of course, it's a hot topic right now. And Common Core, what, it's a big question to answer, because when you talk about the Common Core, the question usually is, what about the Common Core? The Common Core is a set of standards, and usually if people talk about their opinions about it, it has something to do with how those standards are being carried out or a certain curriculum that was adopted to meet those standards. So the Common Core, you know, I just spent time in the Legislative Assembly for WASDA this last weekend and got to hear a lot about some stuff that's come down the pipe for Common Core and a lot of ways to address the Common Core. I have opinions about how things were carried out and implemented with the SWIM school district and some, you know, things that I think should have maybe been done differently as prior to me being on the board. But as far as my opinions, you know, I support the Common Core standards, but it's the implementation and what has been adopted that would be more of a question of specifically what you're asking about.
Mr. Stoffer.
In 2010, our state started implementing Common Core. And then 2014, we were supposed to be fully implemented. And I would agree with Heather here on how it was implemented. I've seen a lot of success with it. Recent, our math tutors that are at the middle school have an excellent program that is raising the math skills of those kids there. But what we need from the community is we need more math tutors out there that would help with that. And I look back, my daughter had similar problems with math in that system that was installed or implemented back in 2005. Now she is going to graduate with honors from Boise State University. Now, she wasn't, she's not a math nerd, but she has overcame those deficiencies or problems with that type of core that was being taught then and will be successful. So yes, I agree with the Common Core and what it will bring, because our kids are learning a lot differently than when we were and when I looked out to the audience, when you were. Most of you probably used Atari as your computer back then, so...
Ms. Wright.
Thank you. Well, Common Core is here, and now we need to make it successful and can't make it go away. One of the challenges as a parent is being told by teacher who was struggling to teach it herself to go to Google and look it up that way and teach my child. I have a problem with that. So we need to help our teachers, give them the time they need to go to, you know, professional development, give them the resources they need. But we also need to help the parents. I, my voice is for the working parent and the, you know, the parent that who's working all day, both of them, and try to come home or up till 1:30 in the morning trying to get homework done without a textbook, without the resource, and told to go to Google. So yeah, there are some deficits with Common Core, and we need to change that, and that is my plan.
Ms. Short.
As Heather said, you know, Common Core is this very hot-button topic at the moment. It is federal standards, and they are brought down to the state, and the states adopt them. We, as a school district, have no choice as to whether we use Common Core standards or not. We have to use Common Core standards, okay? The curriculum that is adopted to meet those standards is different per district. And so our district has adopted curriculum which is different from what we're used to. I had trouble with my daughter's first-grade math homework, okay, which I went through calculus, too, thank you very much. So I know math. And I went and talked to the teacher, and I said, listen, you know, I don't understand why we're doing it this way. And she sat down and explained to me, and it, I understood math. I mean, like I said, I go through, I went through calculus, too, and I understood math rather than just typing something into a calculator. I actually understood the concepts of it. I think it was an excellent, excellent curriculum, and I support it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Payne.
I want to first say that I did not plan to spin and test that question, but I'm glad she did. And the quick answer is, no, I don't support Common Core. Now, that's a complicated answer, and you've heard a lot of those things. And part of it, I can tell you, is exactly what I just said in my opening statement, is that I was up until 1:00 in the morning helping my daughter with Common Core. It's actually called Excelsior Math. I can tell you that I've talked to administrators, I've talked to teachers, and I've talked to parents of students like me, and they oppose it. So as Ms. Short talked about, it being the curriculum that's adopted. So I didn't say that's one of my main goals, but it's something that I certainly want to look at. And I do believe, in fact, I've got an article from the National Review here that I looked at that talked about the eroding support in the nation for Common Core and the standards that are being adopted. So I disagree with the program. I think the implementation needs to be looked at, and that is one thing that I'll look at when I'm elected. Thank you.
Ms. Hendrickson.
I could talk all day about the Common Core State Standards. I spent about five years training teachers on mathematics Common Core standards specifically, but I'll try and keep it within a minute. First of all, I do support the Common Core State Standards. It's a set of standards. It's not a program or a curriculum. And a couple of examples why I do support it is one, and let me be clear, Common Core State Standards is in English Language Arts and Mathematics only. First of all, it increases the use of nonfiction text. So my daughter, who's in third grade, gets to read more nonfiction texts than she ever has before. In math, it's more rigorous, it's coherent, meaning the skills across a grade level and between grade levels are better aligned and reinforced in different content areas. Next, it does cause higher-level thinking, both for teachers to provide opportunities for their students to have discussions and high-level thinking and application. But it just, it's just a really great way for students to go deeper into the math. And finally, I do agree with Charlotte in that parents need support to help teach their students, their children, their kids, how to learn it.
Thank you. Another question for the candidates.
Suzy Schvett. I have a question, and thank you for covering the Common Core. I don't like it, and I'm very glad that you all have some real good input, and I will be polite. My question has to do with school safety. It's been a problem for a long time, and it's not been addressed in SWIM. So my question, each one of you, as a board member, since you govern the school district and the superintendent manages the school district, what will you do about the safety issues that we have at our schools? Homeland, Buffalo Homeland has grants. There's many things that can be done. No money in this bond issue that says safety and security. There's no money that I see in direction to take care of Helen Haller School.
Ms. Stauffer, you'll start.
Ms. Mendez, actually, there is money in that bond campaign because when we build a new elementary, which will-
No, I'm talking about Helen Haller right now for the kids going to school today. Not the new, not the new place.
Okay, well, how we are going to address that is we need to build a new elementary, which will reduce the 22 entry points that are occurring at Helen Haller and put it under one roof and have secure doors that won't allow access in. And then you go over to the high school, we'll be moving the band and choir room, shrinking the campus, putting it on the main campus, which that's another safety and security issue over there too. And then at the Gray Wolf, by getting rid of the portables there where kids have to migrate to to go to school, that also reduces the footprint, which ensures a lot more safety. So we need to build these schools and pass the bond. And that will reduce a lot of those-
In the main-
We're just, no, I need to know. So then everybody has time to answer.
Ms. Wright.
Safety is close to home, literally. My husband is a civil servant, has been for over 20 years. My brother is the SRO for the district. So I hear many issues and challenges that they are facing. As a teacher, it's, the first thing on your mind when you hear a drill that there is a threat and you have to do a lockdown is where do I put these kids and what door do I have to secure? And, you know, whether we pass the bond or find money somewhere else with a grant, right now, we need to find a way to protect our kids. And there are plenty of retired military men and women that could have skills that if we truly are worried about a threat, I'm sure that we could find some volunteers to create a schedule. But we, she's right, we need to protect our children now, not wait till a bond.
Ms. Short.
As a parent, I'm extremely concerned about safety. I don't want my children going to an unsafe school, whether it's crumbling at the foundation or is not earthquake prepared, or whether those children are, you know, at risk for an incoming threat of some sort, okay? The problem is, how do you, how do you do that? I mean, do you, do you set up sirens in all the classrooms and, you know, that's not even possible in some of the portables. There was a threat on the high, or at the high school baseball diamond, and the choir were in the choir room, and they couldn't even know about that information. So security is certainly a problem right now, and there is no way to address it right now unless you have funds. And right now, there are no funds. Right now, we have to pass the bond in order to get the funds, in order to make our kids safe.
Ms. Payne.
Thank you. So I suppose one way is we could get Ms. Wright's brother to just be a roving, a police officer around all the schools. And I understand your issue about Helen Haller. And I was really appalled that my kids went to Gray Wolf. And I agree with Ms. Short that there's not a good safety standard in a lot of the buildings. But at the high school where my kids go now, I worry about that. But I agree with you, Helen Haller is horrible. And if my kids had gone there, I would be a little bit concerned, more than a little bit concerned. I don't know the answer to your question about how would we address that. I would think, you know, part of, I think you need, I think you need a safety resource officer at all the schools. I would like to see that we have a law enforcement officer at all the schools. That's going to be a money issue and dealing with the city of Squam who have those people, unless there's a way the school district could perhaps train and hire and have their own law enforcement officers, which is possible, and other schools have done that. So personally, to answer your direct question, as for Helen Haller, I would like to see us have a direct security officer there. Thank you.
Ms. Hendrickson.
Although over a year ago, at Seattle Pacific University, a stranger walked onto campus and started shooting people. And I was there that day because that's where I work and that's where my second family is. And it changed my life forever. It killed one of our students and it injured a few others. So let me tell you, I know how scary and how serious it is. We can't have the safety we need unless we have a bond pass. We need a single point of entry at all our schools. It is, it is so important that, and we can't make those fixes unless we have the money. Like Heather Short said, we can't do it with the funds that we have. And I can personally tell you how scary it is and how horrible and how people's lives change when something tragic happens. So it can't be done unless we get the bond passed. Thanks.
Ms. Jeffers.
Before I had to make the decision of whether or not to support the bond proposal on the board last year, I took a tour of the facilities, and I toured Helen Haller. And that was my, one thing that stood out was, and the thing that I questioned was the safety of the kids because I saw the access and all the points of entry to the classrooms. As a nursing home administrator, I am responsible for the lives of 90 vulnerable adults and staff, and I'm required by state and federal guidelines to have a safety plan in place, regardless of how old the facility is and regardless of what funds we do or do not have. There are things we can do right now. Sure, we need a bond to, in order to have the safety to change the physical plant in the future, but right now, there are things we can do. We have professional development hours allotted. Those hours need to be focused on topics that are defined by the district and the Board of Directors. So do we need to focus, maybe we need to focus on training for the teachers so they know what to do in case of emergency. We need to have a comprehensive action plan and drills in place so that people know how to handle emergencies and safety. And we need to look at other things we can do, which is locking the doors and different problem solving. Those are things that we can do now while we wait for a bond to pass.
Do we have another question?
Good evening. I'm Dave Schaeffler. Two-part question. The first part is, do you support the bond measure, the current bond measure? And the second part is, if yes, what will you do specifically in your role if elected to pass the bond? And if no, why not?
Ms. Wright, you start.
To answer your question about the bond, it's, it's not up my hands. It's already on the ballot, and it's up to our, all of us, the voters, to get it passed. I can support it. I support the changes that it can bring by any means. As a board member, using those monies, the plan that Jim has worked on and his fellow Squam community for the schools have worked on so hard, you know, it is a plan that we need to advocate for.
Ms. Short.
Absolutely. Is this on? Absolutely, I support the bond. Oh my goodness. Yesterday, I went on a tour of the facilities. I, I had seen certain areas of Haller, the parts that they showed to the public, right? I had seen the auditorium in the high school and the administration building. I had no idea. My daughter goes to Gray Wolf. Gray Wolf is a very nice school. Yes, we are lacking in classrooms. My poor son has to send him portable as all-day kindergartner for every single class. Okay, yes, there are problems at Gray Wolf, but nothing, nothing in compared to what is going on at Helen Haller, what is going on at our district kitchen, which keeps getting forgotten, the fact that those ovens are from the 40s, from decommissioned military ships, and they can't even find eBay parts for them anymore. This is what is feeding our children every day, every day. And yes, this bond needs to be passed.
Ms. Payne.
Thank you. So as you heard earlier in the other forum, there's a lot of issues out there. I can tell you, as a parent, like these other members of this election are, the facilities we have, they're horrible. I can tell you, I go to the high school and junior high were my school, right? Fortunately, my kids went to Gray Wolf. And the thing that appalled me there is they ate their lunch at their desk. And I went to school in Texas, and we didn't have to do that. You know, they have a multi-use room, so I don't know I'm burning my time. But I'm, here's what bothers me about the bond, the way it's proposed now. And it was addressed at the previous thing. If the community has said no twice, by doing it exactly the same way, is the community going to say no again? I don't know. But as Ms. Jeffers said, Ms. Wright said, it's been proposed. So do I support it? I support passing the bond. Would I have supported doing it the way it's done today, like putting it on the ballot in November? No. I think we needed some more time for that. Thank you.
Ms. Hendrickson.
I was on the same tour as Heather Short, so I was just as appalled at the conditions that I saw. And I had already had conversations with people about how bad it was, but unless you go and look, it is, you can't even imagine. It's embarrassing, quite frankly. So yes, I vote and I support, I will support the bond. I do support the bond. I hosted voter registration because people aren't voting. People aren't registered to vote. We blame the adults that live in this community that don't have children, the retirees, for lack of a better word, they're voting. Our parents are not voting. They're not even registered to vote. So we need to spread the word and get our parents of school-aged children, that age group, to get registered and to vote. So that's what I would do to help approve the bond.
Ms. Jeffers.
I absolutely support this bond. I, before making the decision, like I said, I did go on a facilities tour last year and before, this is when we had to make the decision of whether or not to go with the J or package B essentially. And so I took a tour of everything to decide if I really felt that we needed it. And I took a tour of the kitchen. And as a, as a facility administrator, I'm subject to state and federal surveys and state fire marshal surveys every year, at least once a year, and I have to be prepared for that. And so I know what to look for. And I took a tour, and I saw so many violations that I would get cited on in infection control areas and maintenance and life safety issues. I absolutely support the bond, and hopefully all the work that I have done over the past year has worked and it passes. And then it's a moot point after November 3rd. However, if it does not pass, we will be consistent and persistent in sending the message that we're not going to settle for anything less. This is already the bare minimum.
Ms. Stauffer.
I was on the school district facilities team that was formed in 2013 to evaluate our buildings. And we have a strict set of guidelines that the state office superintendent of public instruction dictates that we have to follow. So it sounded like we were throwing darts, saying we need this, we need that. We have to follow those guidelines. Two of our schools have a rating of 54%. That's an F. And that wasn't me making that up or any of the other 15 community members. So we have two schools that have an F. They had an F back in April 2014, they had an F in 2000, last February. Last February, that we were shy, 315 no voters who, if they would have voted yes, it would have passed. We'd be breaking ground right now on a new elementary. Again, our parents need to get out and register and vote. Things that I've done since February, I've registered 60 parents to vote. And I will continue to do that, and I will continue if it doesn't pass when I'm on the board because the need is now. It's appalling as a community that we have buildings like that. We should be embarrassed.
Are there other questions for the candidates?
I have one on a card I can read.
All right.
What is your position on teaching evolution in our schools? And there's no, no name, I don't know who's- What is your position on teaching evolution in our schools?
Wow, this is a repeat from last time. It's not really an issue at this point in time because it hasn't been brought down from the state that we need to revise our, how we are teaching science. So I'll leave it at that. At this point, it's not an issue, so I don't really understand the question. Thank you.
Ms. Payne.
Well, I, am I still on or not? This thing seems, there we go. I, I have to, to ask, I didn't talk about my son. That's, I'm twins, boy, girl. You know, I think they're teaching evolution in school already. I talk to my kids about it, they talk about dinosaurs, and they talk about the things and the earth and all that kind of stuff. So I think it's already being taught. I don't, I don't think you need to not address it because it's already being done. Whether it should be done or not, I think is a question that should go, is a personal issue with a person's religious and philosophical beliefs. And I'm not willing to address that. I'm just telling you that it's already being taught right now. That's why I'm going to do that.
Ms. Hendrickson.
I think the question of whether evolution should be taught or not is really tied to the bigger question of, should you teach evolution versus creationism? Which goes to the bigger question of, are you religious? And are you going to bring those beliefs into the decisions that you make? And most, some people would say, no, no, no. But I think it's important to understand that everybody brings with them their own life experience, their own beliefs, whether you're a Christian or an atheist or a Buddhist or whatever. And you have to just really be in touch with how you believe and how your beliefs influence the decisions you make. And which of those beliefs do you need to really, you know, check at the door when thinking about what is best for all students? Because not all students are like you or like-minded. They all come from different backgrounds as well. So really, the question is really geared towards, are you, as a school board member, able to reconcile your own beliefs and make the decisions for the best of all students? And the answer to that is yes, I can.
I'm not sure of my opinion about whether or not that should be taught is relevant. I think that as a school board member, I leave that up to the experts of the teacher and teachers and staff and district administration as to the content. My concern would be that the standards are being met.
Ms. Stauffer.
I totally agree with all across the board here. The state provides curriculum recommendations, and then we have teachers and staff that review curriculum. And if that came up, I would expect our staff to then make a recommendation to, to the school board, and then we would look through the items and see if it was relevant to teaching in Squam schools. I don't think it is.
Ms. Wright.
Well, as a parent, I guess I can depend on my hat I'm wearing. As a parent, I let my children lead the conversation. If they have questions about, you know, different topics, then we explore them. Knowledge is power. And as a teacher, same thing. I may not structurally teach a topic, but if a child is asking me a question about the opposing topic, then I encourage them to go research it. Go to the library, ask your parents. Whether we teach it in the classroom or not, it would have to be a district decision.
Are there any other questions? We have time for one more question.
I think we have one more question right here. Can you repeat your question? You know where this one is from. If elected, what would be your top priority to focus on?
All right, and Ms. Payne, you're going to start.
Okay, thank you. So I think that was addressed maybe in the qualifications and the issues that we talked about. So my, as I already answered that question about doing it again, so my top priority to focus on, I think, and Ms. Stauffer talked a little bit about this, about the disconnect between the board and the citizens. And I think that that's kind of where it's at. The community doesn't support the bond, from what we've seen. Some of the people in the community do support the bond. I'm not sure I agree with the voting thing because the previous superintendent gave us a class, and we talked about the voters and who were registered, and his information he had was that it was the older people in the community, over 65, who were driving that decision. In fact, he said, if every parent of every student in the district voted for it, it still wouldn't pass. So I don't know. Just going on his numbers. My priority, though, would be to bridge the gap between what I believe is in the community and the schools and try to address that so we have a little bit, not a little bit, a lot better working relationship between all the stakeholders that was previously mentioned. And that would be my priority. Thank you.
Ms. Hendrickson.
I have three top priorities. My first one is Kinsley, who's in Mr. Reno's class at Gray Wolf. My second one is Bjorn, my son, who asked a question, who's in Mrs. Obolde's class. And the third one is my daughter Amelia, who's four. She'll be at Gray Wolf soon. My kids represent all of the students in Squam, no matter how old they are, what programs they're in. They deserve excellence in education. So my top priority is to ensure that we have high-quality programs for all of our students. And we get that through a collaborative, student-focused board, which I can talk about in my closing. Thank you.
Ms. Jeffers.
My top priority is to continue the work that we just started this last year and this last summer. And I've been, conversations with President Haran, and my goal is, I want to create a Board of Distinction. And if you look on the WASDA website, you can read what the qualifications is and what the criteria is to have a Board of Distinction, and I think that we can do that. My top priority is to establish a cohesive collaborative board that is functional, highly functional, that can develop a strong strategic plan and be the driving force that will lead the district to the level that I know it's capable of.
Ms. Stauffer.
First, I want to look at our academic achievements. Work on increasing those graduation rates, which state level, we're at 77, Squam, we're at 74. It is increasing. Our five-year students are at 84, but- But, um, follow on with Mr. Payne, um, there's 29,000 residents in our school district, only 12,000 are, uh, 12,000 typically vote, 20,000 are registered. Of that 29,000 residents, 3,200 are our parents. So, there's a big disparity there. A lot of times, those parents feel they're not being heard. There's a lot of voter apathy out there. Why should I do this? Because the other side is just gonna vote it down all the time. So, they don't come out and vote. But I do know that, um, we turned from the last bond, 13% are the voters, and it was so close to getting passed and it's getting our parents to vote and that will make the difference.
Ms. Wright.
Thank you. My top priority, um, for myself, is to have parent support. Um, like I said earlier, the lack of parent support with the Common Core program has been loud. And I have talked to other parents, I have talked to principal, I have talked to administrator, and we're all feeling the frustration. So, that is my top priority. And second would be safety, you know, whether we need to give our bus drivers in-service trainings on what to do if there is a, a threat on a bus. I'm not even sure that even occurs. They, everybody needs to know, custodian, the bus driver, the teacher. And then, finally, um, implementing a current strategic plan so the rest will follow.
Ms. Short.
Um, so, in order to have a highly functional board, um, or a successful board, you also have to have community input. And that would be, my top priority is, is rebuilding the trust of our community and listening to our community, not just our parents, but also our community members, which I have contact with on a daily basis. And I hear a lot of things. I think as far as a board's goal, uh, we need to work on, you know, increasing our graduation rate, like Jim said. We need to, and making sure that these programs are functional for both the students and for our parents, like Charlotte said. So, basically, I could say just about whatever. And where Anna Otschir said, it's kinda sucks to go last, by the way. But, but we need a functioning board first and foremost, and then we work on all the issues for our students.
Um, we're getting close to 8:30, but I know there's one more person that wants to ask a question. So, if you'll bear with us, this will be the last question.